I would like to, uh, the Santa Cruz County Board of Education regular board meeting, open, and, uh, we will, to begin with, uh, call to order.
Trustee Acosta, trustee Estrada.
Here.
Trustee Nichols.
Here.
Trustee Sanchez.
Here.
Trustee Van Allen.
Here.
President Roth.
Here.
Student trustee Alvarez Dadda.
Um, may I ask if we have heard, are we going to need to move into board member remote attendance approval?
We have not received any requests for, uh, a remote participation under AB2.
For both Oscar and.
I believe that, uh, Oscar is going to be joining the meeting after the return to open session. Since he couldn't participate in a closed session, he requested if he could.
Uh, Dr. Spock, you could lead us in, uh, pledge allegiance.
If you're able to, please rise, face the flag, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am looking, uh, under item three, looking for approval of the agenda. All the approval of the agenda. Okay, all right. Uh, so the motion has been made by Sandra and seconded by Bruce. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No one opposed. We will now, um, can, uh, actually go into closed session. And I ask that anyone that is not involved in this, uh, hearing on, uh, inter- inner district appeal hearing, uh, to please leave the room and we will, uh, let you know when we resume our regular meeting. So we are returning to open session and, uh, I am reporting out on the closed session on the, inter-district transfer appeal number twenty-four dash oh-one. Uh, we, uh, held the district's decision. Okay, with a vote of six to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's right. Five to one. Okay. Now, uh, we will enter into public comment. And this is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items outside the agenda. The board president will recognize any member of the audience not previously placed on the agenda who wishes to speak on a matter directly related to school business. Each speaker on any specific topic may speak up to three minutes unless otherwise limited or extended by the president. The president may allot time to those who wish to speak out or speak, but no action will be taken on matters presented. If appropriate, the president or any member of the board may direct that a matter be referred to the superintendent's office for placement on a future agenda. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak?
We don't have any requests for public comment, President Ross.
No one online. Correspondence. Right, consent agenda. And I'm missing my real, uh, agenda here. Uh, all I did, okay. Do I have a motion?
I'm happy to move the consent agenda, but it was pointed out to me that for some reason on the meeting minutes of the March twentieth meeting, my name doesn't show as trustee's present, but I know I was there.
It's on, it's on page ten of our packet.
You came in after we've taken a little.
But it's not listed there as absolutely. We'll make that, make that correct. Thank you for being.
I saw it too and I thought, oh.
So i- if, uh, if somebody does make a motion, if they could state that with, with.
So I'll move adoption, I'll move the consent agenda, um, with the exception of adding my name to the March twentieth meeting in attendance. And with appreciation for the donations.
Is there a second?
Second, I'll second.
Bruce with first, Sandra with second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? No, uh, I am. Yes, you should have been first. I've just had a rough day, let's just put it that way. Thank you, Oscar. Uh, now correspondence. Berenice.
Yes, hello. Um, you should have all received correspondence from, um, former county board trustee Alyssa Alta, um, explaining her resignation. Um, she has submitted it in writing and would like me to read the following statement. COE staff and Santa Cruz County constituents. I'm writing to you today with a heavy heart to announce my resignation from my position on the Santa Cruz County Board of Education. This decision has not been an easy one, but due to a sudden move out of the county to be closer to my family, I must suddenly, I must sadly step down from my role. Serving as a representative on the board has been a privilege and an honor. Over the course of my tenure, I have learned so much and have been continually inspired by the dedication and passion of our community for the education and well-being of our students. I want to express my deepest gratitude to each and every one of you for the trust you placed in me to serve as your advocate and voice on the board. Your support, feedback, and engagement have been invaluable, and I am truly grateful for the opportunity to have worked alongside you to make a positive impact on the lives of our students and families. As I embark on this new journey in my life, I do so with mixed emotions. While I am sad to leave behind the work and relationships that have meant so much to me, I'm also excited for the opportunity to be closer to my loved ones. Thank you once again for your support, your trust, and your partnership. It has been an honor to serve as your representative, and I will carry the memories of our time together with me always. Kindly, Alyssa Alta.
Thank you. Uh, we will now move to, uh, reports of, uh, and discussion, but the pr- presentations. Eleven point one, recognizing Santa Cruz County two thousand twenty-four STEAM Expo ISF winners.
I, uh, just can do a, a quick introduction and then, um, uh, so you'll, you'll see coming to the lectern is Miguel Asnar, who is, uh, our lead judge extraordinaire. And, uh, I, I, lead just doesn't seem to cut it. I think we gotta get a bigger word than that, Miguel. Um, he has been such a, uh, champion for students. Um, he's bringing so much expertise to the process and really is kind of a, uh, 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 a shepherd of a very complex, uh, process, working in conjunction with Dr. Heather Wigan, our, our science coordinator. And, uh, really has, uh, really helped us ensure that we had a wonderful, um, science fair and STEAM Expo this year. And so, um, uh, we're really excited to share some, some information about, uh, our ISF, uh, winners locally. And, and so we're gonna be, we're going to be sharing who are, who was sent to, who is going to be going to ISF, which I believe is going to be happening next month. And so we're really excited about that. Um, Angela, do you want anything, uh, to add? So, uh, Miguel, please, uh, the stage is yours.
Thank you. We're, uh, very pleased, uh, to present to you Brent Kong. He took, uh, an interesting course to, to reach us, developing a project that he'll talk about for just a moment or two. And then he'll entertain questions if you want more detail than he offers. Uh, he competed, uh, against other high school students within Santa Cruz County. Uh, we previewed his project and assembled experts so that we could evaluate, uh, his approach to machine learning and understand, uh, how impactful it is. Uh, and after much deliberation, we decided he is our Santa Cruz County representative. Uh, we're taking him and three observers, uh, to the International Science and Engineering Fair. Uh, it's in Los Angeles this year, last year Dallas. He will be competing with eighteen hundred other finalists from around the world who are groomed by their cities, states, and countries, uh, to compete. So he has his work cut out for him. Uh, and whatever the outcome, he's going to have an extraordinary experience with all of these other, uh, enthusiastic budding scientists and engineers. So let me introduce, uh, Brent Kong, and he can say a little bit about the project that earned him this spot to the international. Brent?
Oh, thank you. All right, so hello, it's a pleasure to be here. My name is Brent Kong. I attend Scotts Valley High School and I'm a junior. So for starters, I'll give a little bit of a background for my project. And then if you have any questions, just feel free to ask them and I'll be happy to answer them. So my project is a comparison of machine learning models for forest fire prediction. Um, it was inspired by the CZU complex fires of two thousand twenty, during which my family was evacuated. And, um, so for starters, my project considered, um, roughly ten different models. Um, some of them are deep learning, which are really popular these days with, um, the rise of image and text recognition. And some tree-based regressors, these ones are also really famous. They have been notable in winning competitions such as like Kaggle data competitions. And also I consider some baseline models which are, um, relatively simple, but they have been established in the field of machine learning. And I conducted my, um, analysis across roughly four data sets. Two of them I created myself and two of them were actually, um, from forest fires that occurred. Um, one of them was from California and the other was from Canada. And, um, I conducted a extensive review of these data sets and the models. And I discovered that the most effective models were, um, XG Boost and Light GBM. And I also further adjusted my, my project for ISF and, um, yeah, that's pretty much it. Do you have any questions?
Brent, could you tell us in simple terms, what does your project do?
Oh, I'm sorry about that. So, um, it's just comparing models, just machine learning models for forest fire prediction. That's pretty much it, um, just seeing which model performs the best.
And so what, so if I were using that, what, what, how, what would that help me with? It, it's a predictor, uh, that a forest fire is going to take place?
Yeah, so essentially the models will consider a set of conditions like temperature, elevation, topography, and vegetation. And it'll make a prediction whether there'll be a fire, yes, or no fire, um, negative, zero. And, um, there are some applications of this, of course, it could be improved as well to include, um, location and also time-sensitive information. But for starters, I think it could be applied to, um, this new kind of technology called wireless sensor networks, where sensors are placed in a forest. And each of these sensors has a, um, machine learning model that will adequately predict if a set of conditions indicate that there's a fire or not, and the information will be relayed to a far, um, a fire department.
Next slide, you'll see. Very small image of.
Any questions from, uh, from the members of the board?
Free to ask.
Oh, thank you.
I have a question as to what motivated you to, uh, to pursue this specific project?
Oh, so, um, so after being evacuated from the CZU fires, I was kind of like curious about how to like detect fires early on because, I mean, these fires took several months to contain. And essentially, if you catch the fire early on, then you'd be able to prevent like all the destruction that occurred. And, um, I was just in like, I, I, I received the opportunity to research this, um, when I attended the Cosmos Summer Program at UC Santa Cruz. And I met a professor there that was willing to take me on. And ironically, our project was on forest fires and so that's why I decided to research.
I'm, I'm not going to ask for predictions. I just, I just hope, uh, that you continue with what you're doing and using the capacities you've got within you, uh, on these kinds of, of items. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone?
If I could just say thank you to the board for supporting this work because it's exciting to be able to represent this, the county of Santa Cruz to the world, to groups coming from Ukraine, Uganda, Israel, Thailand. Brent is going to be our face there and we appreciate your support.
And I, on, uh, on behalf of the, the county board of education and the county office of education, we'd like to present this certificate of achievement to, uh, Brent Kong. Uh, for best in show, this is a new category or a new way of, uh, that, uh, that Miguel and Heather came up with in terms of, uh, to identify the best in show in, at the, at the, uh, at the science fair. And, uh, so for the twenty twenty-four, uh, Santa Cruz Science and Engineering Fair, congratulations Brent. We wish you best of luck at ISF and we know that your future is so bright. Can, thank you for all that you do and, and keep up the great work.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And now, could we get a picture with you? Yet, oh, we'd like to join us.
We need to know what happens.
All right, one, two, three. Got it.
And Angela, thank you for kind of recreating our science fair. No, it was not just you, it was, a lot of people put a lot of work into that, but I love best of show.
Yeah, and I just want to bring forward Dr. Heather Wigan's name again and, and share her regrets for not being here tonight. She's teaching with Cal Teach this year, so providing yet another important connection between our county office and UCSC and new teachers, so thank you.
We're honored. Now we will have a COE special education presentation. Dr. Spock.
Yes, it is my pleasure to, uh, welcome Dr. Devon Stark, who is our director of our special education program. Um, and to, uh, talk to you about the, the many amazing, uh, services uh, that we provide to our, our even more amazing students. And, uh, Dr. Stark has been, I think we, we, I, I, the day that you were selected as the director of special education was my first board meeting here at the county office of education. I remember, uh, sitting in the audience, uh, when, when you were, you were, uh, welcomed as, as our, as our, our special education director. Um, uh, if you look at the, the several, um, acronyms that follow Dr. Stark's name, uh, you see that she brings a, a depth of knowledge and expertise uh, in serving students and, and special education that, uh, really is, is outstanding. And so we thought, uh, if you recall, uh, kind of a positive program report to share with you the, uh, the, the range of services that are offered to our, our students here at the county office of education and throughout the county. Um, and, uh, so please take it away.
Thank you, Ferris.
Welcome.
I appreciate that, that was quite the intro. Ferris is right, this is my eighth year serving as the director for the department. Prior to that, I was the school psychologist and behavior analyst and autism specialist for an additional eight years. So a lot of time and investment into an organization that I obviously like a little bit, stick around that long, but, um, a- as an aside, I have to say I was in the lobby with those two and they talk science. And that's all they talk about, I was like, I, cause I didn't know what the president, like what the, um, why they were here, but I was like, they're here for something smart. Anyway, um, so the county office of education, the special education department, we offer what is referred to as a regional program. And so, um, we serve the local, uh, nine local school districts in northern Santa Cruz County. And so we do not serve, um, Paharo Valley, they have their own, um, programs going on. So we're really focusing on northern Santa Cruz County and we operate special day classrooms for students with, um, needs that the districts cannot meet. And so, um, we have, our, our gamut ranges from birth to twenty-two. And so if you think about that, we might get a student at birth with a disability that we know will need our, our early intervention services. And in theory, that student could be with us for twenty-five years. And, um, it's a responsibility we take super seriously and it's also an opportunity for us to, um, really bond with our families because a lot of times for our students, they, um, majority of them are non-verbal. And so it takes a lot of trust for especially, um, three-year-olds, you know, to put your three-year-old on, on a bus or drop them off at a, at a, uh, classroom and, uh, they can't come home and tell you how their day was. And so we really, um, work on collaboration and, um, just as bonding skills and, and building trust with our families, it's just of the utmost importance. Um, so like I said, we, we have up to, we have early start program, which is up to forty-six students. Then we have our regional programs and that, um, those start from preschool to twenty-two. Um, and all of our students either have an IEP, which you may be familiar with, which is the preschool to twenty-two, um, document that, uh, provides them an educational program. And then our toddlers and infants have what's called an IFSP, which is an individualized family service plan. Um, and all of our regional program placements are funded by the student's district of residence. And so, um, the business department helps us out and, and it's basically, um, the amount of students that we have and the cost of the program. Um, that's how we determine what our, uh, program, uh, utilization rate is. So if we go to the next one, this is just a historic student enrollment. So back in two thousand and sixteen, which is the year I started as the director, we had about ninety-one students and if you can see the graph, it subtly increased, um, for the most part until our current capacity, which is at a hundred and fifteen. And so along the way, we've added classrooms, um, and sometimes we have to collapse classrooms depending on the student population. And if you look at the next slide, that is, uh, uh, history of the number of classrooms. And so, um, we are currently at fifteen classrooms on seven different school sites. So where are we really? Um, I just did a screenshot of this map and I tried to put stars where our programs are located. And so we might have one classroom on a comprehensive campus. Um, sometimes we have more, but we, we, um, try to, all of the districts try to host regional programs. And so we have classrooms up in San Lorenzo Valley, we have them at SoCal High. Um, the furthest south we go is Aptos because we have some classrooms at our, at the Cabrillo Community College. Um, many of our programs are in Livock School District. This year we have one in Brooknole, um, which will be changing next year. Um, so yeah, that's where, that's where we're located geographically. So our early start birth to three program, that's where I'm going to start. And if you go to the next slide, um, early start is a collaboration with the San Andreas Regional Center. And we have that cap of forty-six and so obviously there's more than forty-six, uh, infants and toddlers in our area that may need early intervention. Those are the ones that we serve and what we do is we try to, um, identify students with the most need because the county office has the, uh, most resources. So, um, other, other, um, infants and toddlers are vendor, vendored out to vendors of the regional center. And they probably don't have a teacher for the visually impaired, for instance. And so we really try to identify students, um, who need the most services. Um, the, these services are provided in the home and it's through a, um, I use the word mentor here and that's inaccurate, it's actually through a coaching model. And so rather than bring in bags and have a bunch of fun things for the infants and toddlers to play with, we use what's called a, a coaching model for the families so that they can do it in our absence. Um, because they're with their infants and children, or infants and toddlers, obviously, much more, a, a longer period of time than we are. And so we focus on what's in the house and we use that with the parents to, to coach them on how to increase, um, their, their child skills in the developmental domains. So, um, that takes us to preschool to twenty-two. And, um, we have, uh, several programs, I call them strands. And so we have programs for students with autism, we have programs for students with, um, extensive support needs. And then we have programs for students who have aged out of high school and it's, um, they're entering their post-senior. And so, um, again, we're, we're providing those special day classrooms for our local districts. And, uh, we have currently fifteen, like I said. Fifteen classrooms. So these are just a list of the related services that we provide to give you, uh, an idea of some of the supports that our students need and I, that our students need in order to be successful in their educational programs. And so it ranges from work experience, um, speech therapy, kind of some of the stuff you would, uh, expect. But then we also have teachers, uh, the deaf of hard of hearing, we also have, um, orthopedically impaired teachers. So a lot of specialists coming together to support our students. So the autism strand is known as chrysalis and, um, we decided that for middle school and high school, we wouldn't call it chrysalis because you eventually have to leave the chrysalis, right? And so we just call it the middle school and high school. But, um, these are specific to students with autism. We've been collaborating with the Morgan Autism Center since two thousand and eight and we implement their model. Um, and the biggest difference with their model is our students move in fifteen-minute rotations to our staff. And, um, there's kind of a scripted, uh, um, progression of what they do in those fifteen minutes. And at the end of those fifteen minutes, the students get their, uh, schedule and they go on to the next staff member. And so there's a lot of movement and a lot of structure. Um, and then, um, in addition to that, they are mainstreaming on our, um, campuses. And, um, we, they, they do group and individual therapy, it depends on, um, the time of day. But they do things like morning meeting and snack and there's, um, music and art and, um, but there's also, if you look at the picture, you'll see the cubbies and there's also some pretty intensive, um, therapies going on in a one-to-one situation. So the profile of these students is that they're, they're really functionally non-verbal, they have some sensory differences. Um, they can have stereotypical and repetitive behaviors. They need assistance with, um, growing their social skills. These students can be an elopement concern. Um, and we're really teaching them to learn to learn skills, so we're teaching them how to sit at a desk. Um, and then we're also helping with, um, a lot of independent living skills. So we're doing toilet training, um, helping them to learn to eat independently, um, et cetera. And they can be behaviorally unpredictable. So we do have a behavior analyst that is on site that assists with these students. So those are our younger students and, um, as all students are, they get older and they get bigger. And so this is a, uh, this is a picture of some of our high schoolers. We try to get them into the community more, so this is them sitting and waiting for a bus. Um, and some things are a little bit different. We can't use prompting so much because these students sometimes are bigger than the staff members. And so, um, there's different approaches, uh, that we utilize. Um, and we're really honing in on those, uh, work skills and, and how these students are going to be successful when they age out of our program at twenty-two. So in terms of programs for students with extensive support needs, um, these are students that typically have a diagnosis of an intellectual disability and often they have, um, it's called comorbid, uh, condition. So they, they have something else, they might have, um, they might have a genetic abnormality. Um, some of them can be medically fragile. Um, and they real, these students really require a lot of one-to-one support. Um, they utilize a lot of our related services that we looked at before in order to be successful. And many of them need, um, help with all aspects of daily living. And these programs range from preschool through post-senior at twenty-two. So here's a, a couple of students that, um, are in our extensive need program. And like I said, they need, they need a lot of support. Um, there's some mobility challenges, they can be medically fragile. We're focusing on functional academics. Um, and so that just means that if we're going to teach them to read, it's going to be in a manner that's going to help them function to be more independent, um, later on in life. So those are our younger, and here's some pictures of our older students. Um, there is a program that has, um, our extensive support needs, uh, sta- uh, students that don't leave campus. And so it's a combination high school, um, post-senior program. And so that's where these students are attending. And so that's where these students are attending. And for our post-senior programs, as I mentioned, they're housed at Cabrillo College. And a lot of these students are with their district of residence until they age out of their senior year. And then they might come to us when they're 18 to 22. So these are students that did not get high school diplomas but are on a certificate of completion track. And we're very proud that our programs are housed at community college. That's not always the case. A lot of times, these programs are housed at high schools. And so our students are very into being college students. And there's a lot of classes that they're able to access at the community college with assistance. And so when I went to a conference, I specifically went to a post-senior presentation to think, well, what can we be doing better? You know, how can we improve our programs? And the checklist was like, well, we do that, well, we do that. Like I left with not many ideas of how we could expand it further. So we're very proud of this program. So a typical work, or excuse me, a typical week for these students is they spend two days at work sites. And we have a workability specialist. They're there with assistance from our staff. And then they spend two days at Cabrillo College, taking a course or two of some kind. And then Friday is Fun Friday. And they decide what activity they want to do in the community as a group. A lot of it is teaching them to ride transit or paracruise. But the focus is really on trying to get them competitive employment when they age out at 22 and have a job and be contributors to our community. And so when they do age out, we have a big celebration. I think some of you have been there. At the end of the year, we have a post-senior graduation, which is one of my favorite days of the year by far. So that's us in a nutshell. Does anybody have any questions? All right, thank you.
Yeah. I have a question about transportation for when you age out. Do we supply that? How do we enable them to get around?
So the districts, their districts of residence provide transportation to and from school. So they go to their homes or a campus nearby. And they bring them to Cabrillo College, for instance. And then during the school day, we are either walking, taking the public transit. There's paracruise, which is a service for individuals with disabilities that they can call. And it's like a bus, a smaller bus that comes and picks them up. And then sometimes our staff members drive them as well. And so when they age out, our hope is that they will be proficient in either being able to take public transit or paracruise, which they're eligible for a lifetime.
Beyond when they do age out, there are state programs?
There are programs through the regional center. And so that's part of their, when a student is around the age of 16, we include what's called a transition plan into their IEP. And as they get older and older, and particularly in post-senior, the regional center is part of our IEP team in planning for what's going to happen after they turn 22. And there are a lot of, there's a variety of programs. There's a lot of community-based programs that are, one program is, you know, five days a week, eight hours a day. And then there's also other programs that they can piecemeal what they're interested in and combine them into their program.
Thank you.
If I could figure out a way to keep them, I would. I just haven't done that yet.
I'm just glad that it's more extensive than it does.
Yeah, it bounces back to the regional center. I said that sometimes we have these students for 25 years, which seems like a lot. But the regional center really has them 80% of their lives, right? Because they're going to age out with us and then that's a lifelong service, so.
Something that I really enjoy and appreciate about our COE is the fact that we strongly believe that everyone is deserving of a public education. And this is just one of many programs that we have that supports that. So special appreciation for the staff, you know, teachers as well, for their determination and for their willingness to help at a time when it's hard to find staffing and people to help. So definitely appreciate them and everyone that makes these programs successful. I do have a question about the difference between IFSP and IEP. I, we hear a lot about IEP, but I gotta confess, I don't know too much about IFSP. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So an IEP is for individuals who are three years of age until 22. An IFSP is for just birth to three. And the focus is very different. So for an IEP, I might do an assessment and determine Johnny needs help in reading. And so then I'm going to write an IEP goal that monitors his progress in reading. Whereas an IFSP, it's home-based. So you're at home, working with the families. And you're telling, you're asking the families, what do you need to feel successful? What do you need, what do you think Johnny needs? And the family says, oh, well, I really wish Johnny would X, Y, and Z. And so then you write an outcome rather than a goal. And it's all based in the natural environment. And so it's a completely different lens than an IEP because you're looking at the whole system. And so like a family's goal might be, I want Johnny to participate in a daycare where he's successful. And so then we might look for daycares with them. Like it's very different than an IEP, which is only at school, if that makes sense.
Yes.
And it's two different parts of the law of the IDEA.
How do students or future students receive an IFSP if they're not attending school? If this is prior to the age at which they attend school?
So there's an organization, so the regional center, as I said, it was a partnership. And so students are usually eligible for both the regional center and for early start services, which is the IFSP service. And there is an organization called STARS, which is vendored through the regional center. And they do the intake assessments. And so it's slightly different. An IEP, you have to be eligible in one of 13 categories. But an IFSP, you do an assessment in all five domains of development. And you have to show a certain percentage of delay. So even the eligibility for it is different. But we get a lot of referrals from pediatricians, parents that maybe notice that one child is developing different than other siblings. Sometimes daycares, we would get a referral for. So they kind of come from the community, you know, more than a teacher or something that you would think of with an IEP.
Very informative. Thank you.
You're welcome.
No, no. I just wanted to make sure. Anyway, thank you very much. Very informative. I appreciate our county office of education and all who make it up.
Thanks so much, Joan.
I'm not doing well today. Item 11.3, multilingual students and network presentation. And so Dr. Saval.
Yes, I'd like to start us off here. I'd like to welcome Barbara Hubner, who's our multilingual coordinator for here at the County Office of Education and joined the Ed Services team from our alternative education program and has been doing a wonderful job to continue the effort to uplift our multilingual students. We used to use kind of deficit language in the past when we spoke about students who were learning English. And, you know, we'd call them limited English proficient. And back when I was working in the migrant education program, those are the kind of terms. And now we really want to see students really celebrate what they bring to our schools, right? And this is a very large portion of our community. And we have such a, you know, a wonderful diversity that includes our multilingual students. And so Barbara's been helping to bring together and support all of the different kinds of systems and programs that exist that help our multilingual students be successful in school. And one of those, which I'm taking a little bit of your, what is the term? Take away your thunder, is that the World Languages Showcase is going to be taking place next week. And I'm really excited to also be a part of that showcase. And so we're hoping that when you hear more about that from Barbara, that you're going to be joining us on that day. And so you could see our students really shine and a little bit of me too. But, you know. So Barbara, thank you so much for being here and for all the work that you're doing on behalf of our multilingual students.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Roth, trustees, and Superintendent Saval. I really welcome the opportunity to provide an update on the program and services that we provide. And today, I'm going to focus on what do we mean by multilingual learners? And looking a little bit at our countywide data and a couple of ways that we're supporting through the COE our multilingual students through the Multilingual Leadership Network and the World Language Expo that. And so you totally stole my thunder because I was just going to say, no, but it's great though, because I was just going to say how much I love my title. So I've been a bilingual teacher and educator in Santa Cruz County for over 25 years. And I was thinking about, if I would have had this job 25 years ago, I would have been the Limited English Proficient Coordinator, which is a mouthful of deficit language. I'm like, oh, that'd be a horrible title. And then we moved to English learner, which is better because at least it doesn't have limited in it. But I really love the word multilingual because it's really more inclusive, more asset-oriented. And it really reflects a deeper understanding of who we're talking about. So I love my title and the Focus and Accurate Coordinator. But I'm really glad that you pointed that out, that how far we've come in California and our understanding around multilingual students. So how do we define multilingual students? And as you can see, we have like the, some definitions, some acronyms. So our dual-language learners are students zero through five who are working on a language other than English at home. When they enter the school system, if they have a home language survey that showed they have a language other than English, they get the initial LPAC. And depending how they do on that, they will either be considered initially fluent proficient if they have a strong, if their English is proficient to access the instruction. And if not, then they are considered English learners and require extra supports to access the core instruction as well as develop that English proficiency. So then we also have our IFAPs. And then once students reclassify, could they reach that proficiency in English? We call them RFAPs. And then we have students who are considered English-only and are developing a second language. And they too are multilingual students. Next slide. So who are we here in Santa Cruz? And so we can look at our donut there. And our blue section is our English-only, is 58%. With 23% who are current ELs and 15% are reclassified with 3% initial fluent speakers. And always when I look at data, I always ask, what does the data tell me? But also, what does the data not tell me? Whose stories are not in this data as well? And really, when I first started being a teacher, we talked about being bilingual and almost like a switch, on, off. You're either, or you're not, or you're proficient, or you're not. And it really isn't. It's a spectrum, right? And maybe you understand a language, but you don't speak it. Or maybe you did speak it at one time, but you haven't been using it and you kind of lost it a little bit, right? And you regain it. And so multilingualism is very complex. And there's a continuum of experiences that may not be reflected in this data at all. A lot of students may not have benefited or experienced access to bilingual education and had that loss of language with their ancestors, with their families, with their grandparents, and then actively worked to regain it. And so anyways, this is something that I always like to think about when we're looking at our data. Next slide. That's Santa Cruz County, yeah. So we're, and I looked at the last years, few years, and it looks like we've gone down, our English-only has gone up 1%. Like it was like before COVID, it was like 56, then 57, and then 58. Then COVID, we didn't really have like all day, the data stayed the same. So it's kind of roughly where we are. But yeah, that represents our county. So two things I'm going to talk about today is the Multilingual Leadership Network. And I'll talk about why there's an ED there at the end. This is one of my favorite pieces. And I participated in the Multilingual, in the MLN, when I worked in Alt Ed and also previously in SoCal District. And I really loved the network. And so this year, we've met three times. I was hired mid-year, so we didn't meet the beginning of the year. But these images, like, why is she showing us mushrooms and roots? So these are the images that I used when we met in December. I think about the image in the left-hand corner, all those mushrooms around the tree. So much goes into supporting a student, right? There's family, there's instructional aides, there's teachers, there's TOSSAs, there's administrators, there's coordinators, there's all of us that work together, right? And supporting that student. So there's, the network is really vital and important, right? It's not a one-person job. A lot of times, it was othered, like the ELD teacher would work with the student, but really requires all of us working together to support the student. And so much is happening underground that we don't see. A lot of times, students are not speaking, they're not proficient. But doesn't mean they're not learning and understanding and thinking and engaging in other ways. And I also think about that middle image of how much goals that we don't, how much work is involved in doing things that look really small, but really is involved a lot. So that mycelium network is really vital. And the image on the right is our forest, is our county. Some of our districts have lots of multilingual students, 6,000. Some have 60, 600, some just may have six. But the complexity of dealing with those six students, it's just as challenging if you have 6,000, right? You just have a different kinds of complexities. And really, it's about how we all share in this. And so a vibrant mycelium that's feeding off of one another creates a really healthy ecosystem for our multilingual students. So that's why there's, that's why we got roots going on there. Next slide, please. So when we came together in December, our first meeting, we kind of looked at where we've been and where do we want to go next? And so as, and we've been working on shadowing and understanding what that meant to kind of get a better understanding of what our multilingual students daily experience in school. And we did that for the last couple of years. And we had findings. We found that a lot of our multilingual students weren't talking in class. And what do we want to do about that? How do we engage them? We also were talking, well, we've also been looking at reclassification data. Where are we on our, and supporting students on their path to bilingual literacy? How do we want to increase the state, so bilingual literacy candidates? You know, there's also work we can do around that. And also taking a look at the achievement gaps that exist in between our EL students and our multilingual students, our EL students in math and science in ELA, and maybe what do we want to do around integrated ELD? Or how do we want to work around that? So these were some big topics or buckets, if you will, that we've been working on, that we kind of think, where do we want to go as a network? There was a lot of interest in following up with the EL shadowing, which made sense because that's like, oh, well, this is what we found out. What do we do next? And maybe you want to work with Jeff Swears, who's a noted scholar around engagement and academic discourse. So the next slide. And yay, I got to bring Jeff Swears to our multilingual network. He was available and it worked. And he's really renowned. He's lucky us that he was able to come. And he really worked with us in March. And he's coming back in May to help us think about how do we help students build ideas? And the role of language in that? And also is fortunate to be able to bring them to PVSD in the afternoon when there is an EL academic leads. So it was almost like we got two-for-one kind of thing. He came in the morning, worked with our MLN in the afternoon with PVSD. And there was 40, 50, 40-plus, almost 50 academic coordinators, principals, TOSSAs. So it kind of really felt like he touched on the county, right? Like a lot from all our schools. Next slide. Action picture of us with Jeff Swears. And he had us up and doing strategies and learning together. And in the afternoon, I wish I had taken, Angela took these pictures. I wish I'd been thinking about taking pictures in Pahr, because that was a room of almost 60 people doing the strategies and it was really engaging. Next slide. And in December and March, we had really a broad representation, which was a big goal because our MLN had kind of dwindled a little bit since COVID. And so it was really great to bring people, our small districts, our large districts, Alt Ed, and even thinking broader, like our health and wellness, social emotional leads and NTP. And because really, everybody's work touches on multilingual students. So that was kind of like really great that everybody was supposed to come. So that was kind of like really great that everybody was supposed to come. Next slide. So again, but I can add a couple pieces, and it's great, and this is here, I'll give them a big plug. So next week, we have our World Languages Expo, and it's going to be at SoCal High next, this year. We have six schools participating. So we added, we have Watsonville High and Pajaro Valley are, are joining this year and a component of the migrant ed students. So that's really going to be great. And we have, I reached out to Andres, who's our amazing coordinator of youth leadership, I said, these, for the multilingual youth taking action, like, does your students want to work with this, with this event? And he said, yeah. I'm like, great. So we've been working together and his students, well, one of, one of the students actually created that really cool icon thing there, the MYPA. And that same student actually participated in this last year, and he's actually going to be helping emceeing the event. So it's really exciting. They're designing the, the certificates, helping staff the event, participating, they're going to be doing poetry and emceeing. So it's going to be really cool. And then, of course, Superintendent Ferris will be sharing his poetry as well. So it's a thrill. Next slide. It's always nice to circle back with students. I don't have pictures because it hasn't happened yet, but these are pictures from last year's and the year event before. And I, the bottom corner are teachers from Harbor, SoCal High, and PCS, and Rolling Hills. And the middle bottom are students and their posters, because they, there's a poetry component, and then there's a poster presentation where they're talking about, sharing their, about a project that they presented in this second language or third, maybe their heritage language, or might be a second language step, or a third. And I just want to share two stories to illustrate the idea of this idea of why multilingualism is such a more inclusive and how far we've come. The student on the top-left corner, Daniela Sambrano, was my third grade student many years ago at SoCal Elementary. And that school didn't offer a bilingual program, even though I'd been a bilingual teacher at other sites. She only spoke in English with me. I would try to engage her in Spanish, but she, that was not a language of comfort for her. So it thrilled me when I heard her poem in Spanish about her grandmother and the matriarch as a family and all her, the roots to Mexico, and she's, her poet, her poem's beautiful. And for me to hear her speak in Spanish was such a thrill, right? Like how she's reclaiming her language. The student on the right, Nancy Zhuang, I wasn't her teacher, but I was her big sister's teacher in fourth grade. And I actually know the family from when they first came to California, when her older sister was in first grade. My, she was my youngest daughter's first grade class, so we got to, and then became friends, and we got to know the family. And so they came from China to Mexico to California. And so it's interesting for me to hear Nancy perform a poem about her mother and her sister in Spanish, and how that is interesting, is important also about her history and her family. Very different, though, than Daniela, right? So Daniela has all these ties to her family in Mexico, but the history for Nancy is equally important, powerful in her family's journey, right? And how Spanish situated for her. And so it gives me great pleasure to be part of this, of the county office that's promoting events where all are welcome, and all kinds of multilingual experiences are included, right? We have a deeper, more inclusive understanding, right, of our multilingual community. So thank you very much. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer, and thanks for the time.
Can I just add really quickly, President Roth? I think you can hear the excitement and passion that Barbara brings. I wanted to kind of come back to, or make a reference back to the important work of this board in recognizing bilingual and multilingual advocacy and the great conversation you had last month about the ways in which schools haven't always celebrated, schools haven't always advocated for. Want to speak to the, just my personal experience with Barbara, that energy and passion and expertise that she's bringing tonight has really reinvigorated our multilingual network and reinvigorated our CNI team, our curriculum instruction team, kind of re-inspired us and helped us think about our why. Why do we do this work? So I just wanted to add that piece. I'll turn it back over to you.
Any questions?
I just have a comment that I want to make as well. Personal experience, growing up, I was involved, included in a dual language enrollment in school, and that was a decision that my parents had to make, and they struggled with that, them being Spanish speakers, that being the language that we spoke at home, and they wanting to make sure that I was successful and that I could, you know, pick up and be able to speak, write in English. And thankfully, there were people in, in my life, in, in school that encouraged them to do dual enrollment, dual language enrollment. And I am extremely grateful because I feel comfortable, confident in both languages. I think I have so many friends, cousins who understand it, who listen, but won't necessarily speak it or are afraid to do it. So there is a lot of benefits in multilingual and education in the schools, you know, and they play a huge role. I admire, and I am just fascinated when you go to Europe and you, you see all these people that speak two, three, four languages. For whatever reason, here in the US, it's, it's English. You know, that's, that's a language. So anything we can do to encourage multilingual, I think, is, is amazing and beneficial, you know, to, to everybody, to the community, to, to ourselves, and can help us out in the future, for sure. So thanks again for a really, first of all, really glad and happy to have you with us, and look forward to continuing to, to work with you, alongside you, to be able to promote and encourage multilingualism in this county.
Thank you.
I just feel the same way, and I also want to also acknowledge your enthusiasm and skill that is obviously a factor here that's wonderful.
Thank you.
Yes, I regret, I speak one language, understand French, and when I tried to go take Spanish as an old person, the French came back. Anyway, but I do appreciate that we support and encourage language development across the different, different languages.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara, for reinvigorating the, the multilingual network and for all your, your wonderful work on behalf of our students.
Thank you.
Moving on to what was the most difficult part of the agenda for me was the actuarial study of retiree health liabilities. And I am retiring tomorrow, so it's like a nightmare, thinking, this is what I'm doing to UCSC. So anyway.
Yes, I'd like to welcome Rebecca Olker, Becky, who is going to be presenting. She's, Becky and Leanne are the only ones in the world who can bring fun to the, to the acronym GASB. And so, so we're going to be learning a little bit about, about our liabilities and, and Leanne, do you want to, do you want to share any, want to make this even more exciting?
Thank you, Edward. He likes me.
What did, what did Edward say?
Woo woo.
There's a lot of excitement in the room.
So for some of our newer board members, what Becky's going to be sharing with us tonight is the evaluation, basically our position when it comes to our retiree health liabilities. You're going to hear the term OPEB, which means Other Post-Employment Benefits. This has nothing to do with like anyone's STIRS or PERS retirement. What this has to do is the health insurance that's offered to our employees upon their retirement. And there are a ton of acronyms. We should have brought Hershey kisses for the person who could see the most acronyms in this presentation, but, and we have a tendency to like hang with our acronyms, so if at any time there's an acronym that you don't understand, please ask Rebecca, and she can explain it to you. So with that, I will hand it over to you.
Thank you very much. And I was going to request next time, I want to be first, because these are really hard presentations to follow. I have no children in my slides. I apologize for that. I will do better next time. So yes, as Leanne said, well, first, good evening, the Superintendent Sabat, members of the board. I'm going to be talking, as Leanne said, about OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits, Retiree Health Benefits. So as Ferris mentioned, GASB, this is a federal program, basically. This is not just unique to California, it's federal. So federal does what they do, they issue standards on how they want to see it recognized in audit reports. And they have changed their minds several times over the last few decades, which is why they keep issuing new standards. So the ones that we are following, as all the way on the left, you're going to see GASB 74, 75, and that's in 2017 was the latest one. I included the other terms because some people still refer to some of the older terms, and you'll hear them thrown about. So this is kind of a crosswalk for you to see. You can go to the next slide. So basically, the next two slides are just a fancy way of saying that we are required to get this report done every two years. So it has all of this thing, not before this date, not after that, but it's basically a simple way of saying every two years. The report I'm going to be talking to you about tonight was based on data through June 30th, 2023. Takes a little while for the actuariales to go through and do their, do their study. They need our year-end audit report to compile the information in order to get the final numbers. So that's why we just now have this presentation available to share. The next slide, please, basically says the same thing, still within two years. The off-year that we don't do the actuarial study, we do something called a roll-forward study. Takes all of the information that they did in the full study, rolls it forward, changes a few things due to market conditions, and gives us slightly updated numbers. This one is the full study. The full study looks at who is currently employed, who are currently retired, and what are the market conditions that we need to be able to fund their health insurance through the life that we are covering them. So the next slide. Now this is where it gets really boring, if that wasn't boring enough. The actuarial, what they use to look at, they're going to look at everything through the life, how many years they think a person's going to work for you, what age they get hired, how many years that your, your OPEB requires them to work. So for example, our OPEB requires them to work at least 10 years before they qualify for these benefits. And then once they retire, they only get the benefits through age 65. So there's a lot of terms and limits that we have to look at. If you go to the next slide, they also want to look at what they call soft caps and hard caps. And so for example, in this one, the insurance is a soft cap. Ours goes up every year depending on the level of coverage that we're going to be able to provide for our employees, which it also impacts our retirees. And then the hard cap, as I mentioned, is age 65, at what point they transition over to Medicare. Next slide. So again, very, very boring information, but how they look at this, what we're basically looking at is, in today's dollars, if we started to set money aside, how much are we going to need to set aside if we are able to earn interest on it to get to a future point of how much we will owe over the life of this liability? Based on this, they look at what they call a 19-year rate of return. Over the last 19 years, on a plan like this, how much is a plan expected to earn an interest? And in this case, they're using 6.75%. And they're also saying, but it might not actually be accurate, so we're going to give ourselves 50 basis points of leeway. Could be 6.25%, could be 7.25%. So somewhere in there is how much interest you're going to earn. So if you put money today, it earns all that interest. In the future, you will get to this target amount that we want. Next slide. And all of that is to say, we are going to get to the present, the actuarial present value of projected benefits. It's a fancy term to say, how much money do we need to set aside to fund everybody that we want to cover for this liability? So now we're going to get into a little bit of numbers. Here's the fancy numbers. So the, this, when they look at all of this information, they're going to break it out based on classification. So you can see all of the classifications there, certificated managers, classified and classified managers, as well as confidential. And then you'll see it's also on current employees as well as retirees, broken out in all the categories. The one that we look at is basically just the grand total, the 12.2 million or 12.187. That grand total is our entire makeup of all of our employees and retirees, how much it's going to cost if we were to have shut the program down, June 30th, 2023, of all the people that were currently hired participating, how much it's going to cost to fund them way in the future? That's how much it's going to cost us. So next slide, please. Now this goes back to all of the acronyms that Leanne was just talking about. So we are going to look at three basic terms, total OPEB liability, and that is that future amount that I keep talking about, what is it in today's dollars? What do we currently owe on that before we've earned any interest? The fiduciary net position, do you have a savings account? Do you already have money set aside to pay for any of that? And then the OPEB liability, the net OPEB liability, the difference between the two. So for example, in very simple terms, you get a car. You owe $1,000, you have $800 set aside in a savings account. The difference between the two, that $200, is your net OPEB liability. So, next slide there. So now you're going to be, see the net OPEB liability, and I did not bring my glasses up, so let me switch to, oh, I can look at the screen. So looking at this screen, you can see that the net OPEB liability is 8.8 million. That's the today's dollars of what we are going to owe. The fiduciary net position, we actually have something called an irrevocable trust. That means when we put money aside for this specific activity, it can only be used for this specific activity. We can pull money out to pay for these retiree benefits, but we can't pull money out for any other reason. That's why it's irrevocable. A lot of other districts set up revocable trusts or just try to set money aside in other funds, but this is the securist way to ensure that the money will be there for the retirees. And at the measurement date of June 30th, the balance in that trust fund was $12,064,000. So in the simplest terms, we need 8.8 million, we have 12.064, we are overfunded by 3 million. And I know that sounds really great, however, again, a lot of things are going to continue to change. So when we also want to look at not just that 12 million that we currently have set aside, but go back to the previous number that I talked about, the actuarial projected value, present value, that's the number at the bottom, the 12, 187. So when you look at that, it's saying that we have 12,064,000, we need 12.18 million. So we are 99% funded, but again, I want to reiterate, it's based on who's currently employed, the current retirees, market condition, these things change just continuously. So last time I came, I think we were like 3 million short. So it just keeps changing over and over depending on the makeup. But that is the presentation for now and where we stand with our liability account. Are there any questions?
Wonderful presentation.
Yes. Can we go to the, back to the first graph or table? There was a column that said confidential, who's, who's that?
Confidential are the three employees that, if they have anything possibly to do with, say, negotiations, are considered confidential. So we have three employees within our organization that are labeled as confidential employees. It's, it's a position, it's the type of position that they're holding.
I like the name confidential. Okay, thank you.
I rest.
Dusty Sanchez, I was just saying, those, those positions typically live in the human resources and then in, in my business department.
Okay, nice. Sorry, can we go to another table? That one. Post-65 benefits, what are those?
So those are the people that are already retired that are receiving the benefits. So again, so we actually, way back when, before 1998, we had offered lifetime benefits. A lot of people around the world did, or around the United States, and then they realized how cost prohibitive it is. So after, if you were not hired before June of 98, you were considered, you were then cut off at 65. Before 1998, there were certain groups, depending on which category you were in, but some got lifetime benefits, some got an extended amount. Right now, our retiree benefits are, you have to work for 10 years, and then it becomes a two-to-one ratio. For every two years you work, you get one year of coverage. So if you work for 20 years and you retire at age 55, you will have the 10 years of coverage to get you to age 65.
Does the two-to-one ratio start a year after year 10, or does it go, is it retroactive?
It starts right when you hit the 10, then it kicks in, and so that 10 counts, but you have to get to the 10, and then you would get the two-to-one ratio, so you would get five.
So it's retroactive to your first day? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Olker, for your presentation.
Now that all the laughter's died down, I do just really want to appreciate that this is, again, this is the kind of competent work.
Can you speak into the mic?
It is really important to us that you bring this to us, and you know, we can be kind of dazed by the numbers, but they make sense when you tell us about them. And, and I know at least that I can go look and I can get an answer if I really need something. And. if I really need something. I just really admire how you do it, so thank you.
Yeah, alone at home, it was hard, looking at all those figures.
I do want to point out that a lot of our progress, if I have a moment, is attributable to a gentleman by the name of Barney Finley. Barney Finley had the wisdom and probably wanted to make sure his benefits were going to be paid for when his retirement came to actually set up a process wherein a certain amount of each of our payroll cycles takes money specifically as an employer tax, but it's at our discretion. And we set that money aside every single payroll to help pay for retirement benefits for people. So I would, I don't think I'd be too far out on a limb to say we're probably one of the better positioned, for sure, in our county as far as taking care of funding for our retirees. It's a very difficult thing for school districts to try to set aside. And again, through Mr. Finley's wisdom of assigning employer-imposed tax, if you will, we've been able to have a great year this year.
We're going to take a five-minute break. So you can jump up and down and celebrate. So if we'd be back here about six forty, approve the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five COE and student program. Okay, maybe this will help, I put that right in front of me. That we will be approving the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five County Office of Education and Student Programs calendars.
Yes, so this is the proposed calendar that was included in your packet. You'll see that for August, for the start of the school year, we're looking at a staff development day on the eighth. And orientation day for teachers on the ninth, for students to begin on August twelfth. And so that would be the start of the school year for us. You'll see, you can see the breaks, of course, as well as the, the winter break, which I believe begins on the sixteenth this time. And then, we finish up on the third of January and begin students' return on the seventh of January. And then, that means that the end of the school year will be on the thirtieth of May of two thousand twenty-five. So the graduations will probably be that week, the week of the twenty-sixth. We've tried our best to align ourselves to school districts, and we got close one year, and then it's kind of gone back to being all over the place again, unfortunately. One of the challenges is that some of the districts do multi-year calendars, and a lot of times, it's, they are negotiated, of course. And so there's, that, and those negotiations could really have an effect on the length of your winter break and kind of. And so, at this point, we're, this is, this is the plan for this year, and we hope that it goes with your approval.
It's too bad about the, yes, because it's, a lot of our programs are outside of what used to be their calendars. Sorry, because it caused problems on both sides, for the district and for the county office.
I'll move approval.
Is there a second?
A second.
Bruce, Eduardo. First and second. So.
Yes.
Thank you. Rest of the board, all in favor, say aye.
Is it a roll call?
I don't think so, wait a minute.
Not a resolution, is it?
No, I, yes, it is.
Calendar, it would be a regular voice, voice. There's roll call there, but it.
Okay.
Aye.
Anyway, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, the motion passes. Moving on to first reading of board policy. And this is Board Policy twelve-fifty, Visitors and Outsiders.
Yes, so this was brought to our attention from a community member who shared with us that our board policy, AB, BP twelve-fifty?
Twenty-one fifty.
Twenty-one fifty?
Oh, twelve.
No, it's twelve-fifty, thank you. Yes, twelve-fifty is, was, did not include the components that are required by Megan's Law, and which is related to the presence of sex offenders on campus. And so, when a parent or somebody else who has school business intends to come onto campus for that school business, such as to talk to the teacher about their child, they are required by law to notify the school and request permission to be able to, and they have to notify the school of their status as a sex offender. And so, you'll notice that there is a paragraph that is added into the, to this, to this board policy that states that any person who is required to register as a sex offender pursuant to Penal Code two ninety, including a parent guardian of a district student, shall request written permission from the principal before entering a school campus or grounds. As necessary, the principal shall consult with local law enforcement before allowing presence of any such person at school or other school activities. The principal shall also report to the superintendent or designate any time he or she gives such written permission. And, and so, it's important for this process to be a part of our board policy. And, and so that's why we've made a modification to, to AB twelve-fifty to be in compliance with the law. Are there any questions?
Big lack. When I was reading this, I thought.
You will notice that if some of the, our districts, most of our districts do have this updated language in their policy. And, and it is important that we have a protocol in place for, you know, so that we're, this is part of our processes to ensure that all of our administrators are aware of this policy. And also, if they discover that a person who's come on a campus has not, sometimes we find out through other sources that the person actually has, is, has, has been required to identify themselves as a, as a sex offender. And in those cases, we're also required to work with.
I review this sort of as the policy committee chair, and I'm glad to have the change regarding sex offenders. And also, it's interesting to me that the earlier section directly addresses some of the things we've been struggling with about access to the office. And this seems important and appropriate. I'll recommend it, and I'll be happy to make a motion.
Second.
Okay, so I did make a motion.
Motion by Bruce and seconded by Sandra. Very grateful for whoever brought it to our attention. And I thought we were just updating what we are going through with our badges and all that sort of stuff. We can either have this as the first reading or we can pass it.
I'm happy to have it be, to waive the second reading. That's okay with others? That's part of my motion, then, is to waive the second.
So, this is a roll call.
Student trustee Alvarez Delgado.
Yes.
Trustee Acosta. Trustee Estrada.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols. Trustee Sanchez.
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen. President Roth.
Yes. So the motion passes. Now, we're going into some proclamations, resolutions. Twelve-point-three, approved resolution twenty-four-dash-twelve, proclaiming May first through the seventh, twenty-four, for flying the rainbow flag and honoring Harvey Milk Day. So, you want to say anything, or should I turn it over to Sandra?
Oh, I'm, maybe I could just say a few comments. I just, I want to thank the board for, for really uplifting our community. Our, there's many resolutions in here celebrating different parts of our community. And I think we're very, we sound very proud of, of our LGBTQ community and our students. And this is, we are going to be celebrating the raising of, of our pride flag in May and continue for it to fly into June as well, of course.
What's the date that we're raising the flag?
The, May second. At what time?
This time?
Ten AM.
Oh, good.
Yes. And, and so this resolution talks about the flying of the rainbow flag and also honoring Harvey Milk Day. And, and we would appreciate if you would consider approving this resolution. May second at ten AM. Thanks, Heather.
Veronese has been wonderful in reminding us all of the different things coming up. I truly appreciate it.
I'll move approval of the resolution twenty-four-dash-twelve, proclaiming May one through seven, two thousand twenty-four, for flying the rainbow flag and honoring Harvey Milk.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Bruce, seconded by Eduardo. Starting not to even be able to speak. Anyway, it's a roll call, so Veronese.
Student trustee Alvarez Delgado.
Yes.
Trustee Estrada.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols. Trustee Sanchez.
Aye.
Trustee Van Allen. President Roth.
Yes. The motion passes. Next, item twelve-point-four, adopt resolution twenty-four-dash-thirteen in support of the Day of the Teacher.
Yes, May seventh, two thousand twenty-four is designated as the Day of the Teacher in California. And, and we're, this is, of course, a, a message from the County Board of Education to, to, in appreciation of all the amazing work and connections, inspiration, support that our, that our teachers offer our students day after day. And so, as you have done in the past, we hope you would consider supporting this resolution and, and really uplifting our teachers.
I have a good confident feeling that this is going to pass. I think we all recognize the work of the teacher.
Will there be any kind of special thing happening on that day that we should be aware of?
We are going to be celebrating our staff picnic, which incorporates both a celebration of our teachers and our classified staff and, and of course, our managers as well. And that is taking place on.
May eighth, that is a Wednesday, from twelve to four.
And so we, you'll be.
At the Anna Jean's Cummings Park, sorry.
Sorry?
At the Anna Jean, Anna Jean's Cummings Park in SoCal.
And when I provide my superintendent report, you'll see a slide with all the dates that you'll be able to reference, including, including that, because we would love to have you there to celebrate with us. And that is, of course, honoring our teachers as well.
What time is that?
From twelve to four. And we will be having a taquero. So we will be having tacos, quesadillas, and tortas. There are veggie and vegan options.
There'll still be ice cream, right?
There will be. And Mary Ann informed me that they have an extra cool flavor of ice cream that's available for those that are lactose intolerant. It's chocolate-covered bananas. Ooh, spicy.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of this.
I'll second.
Motion made by Sandra, seconded by Oscar. Veronese, could you take the role?
Student trustee Alvarez Delgado.
Yes.
Trustee Estrada.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez.
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen. President Roth.
Yes. So the motion passes. Twelve-point-five, adopt resolution twenty-four-dash-fourteen in support of Classified Employees Week.
Yes, in addition to our teachers, we often refer to our classified staff as the backbone of, of the services that we offer our students, whether they work as providing guidance to students, instructional support, of course, bus drivers. We have our, so many of our staff here in, in the, at the County Office of Education, from administrative assistants, our business services teams. The classified staff are so essential to everything that we do. And, and it's, we hope you would take this, you would approve this resolution to, to celebrate them and to formally show your, your support for them.
Okay, motion made by Bruce.
I'll second.
Seconded by Sandra. Veronese, please.
Student trustee Alvarez Delgado.
Yes.
Trustee Estrada.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols. Trustee Sanchez.
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen. President Roth.
Yes. Okay, approval, next item, approval of resolution twenty-four-dash-fifteen, Recognizing Jewish American Heritage Month. Ferris?
Yes, thank you so much. This resolution is, this was a proclamation that was initiated in nineteen eighty by Jimmy Carter. And the, the, the resolution really is to celebrate the contributions of Jewish Americans, as well as to stand out against antisemitism in our schools and our community, and, and to really celebrate the many contributions of Jewish Americans in, here in our history and, and, well, locally as well, of course. And so, we would, we would love it if you would consider approval of this, of this resolution in support of Jewish Americans.
While you're considering that, I thought I'd write, I would read to you this one paragraph that just, it just gets me. Because I didn't know about this until fairly recently, the last five years or so. Whereas in the summer of nineteen forty-two, the SS Drottingen Hole departed from Europe, carrying hundreds of desperate Jewish refugees en route to New York City from Sweden. The ship and the passengers were denied entry and turned back. I just think, of all the travesties that I had never heard of before, that is, that is really a big one. I can't believe that that happened. I mean, who are we? Are we, are we not the land of the free? I, I really appreciate that probably Nick and Veronese put their heads together on this. I know you didn't write the resolutions, but you kept them like this. So I'll, I'd like to, I'm sorry, I can't think of the words. Let's see.
Move the resolution.
Move approval.
I'll second. I would like to say, I'll second this and just comment that it just seems all the more important right now that we acknowledge not only Jewish Americans, but all the different threads, parts of the salad, however you want to, whatever metaphor, that make up this country, that we are being way too divisive among ourselves right now and really hurting a lot of people, especially kids.
Especially since we're all human.
Human animals, yes, we are.
Student trustee Alvarez Delgado.
Yes.
Trustee Estrada.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez.
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen. President Roth.
Yes. The motion passes. Next is approval of resolution twenty-four-dash-sixteen, Recognizing May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Yes, thank you. I think in, kind of in the vein of, of Bruce's comments earlier, or just, just a moment to go, of really celebrating the diversity in our community. This is a resolution that you have supported in the past as well. This one is supportive of National Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. We often refer to this community as. We often refer to this community as, with the acronym AAPI. And this is, this is a honor that has been celebrated by Congress since 1992. And the, you'll see in the resolution, it speaks about the historical contributions of the Asian American and Pacific Islander community and the many, the many immigrants who have come to this, to this country and have contributed to, to the diversity that we celebrate today. Trustee Van Allen.
Well, I would like to move approval of this resolution, and it's mentioned in the resolution, and it's important, I think, to acknowledge that our little town of Santa Cruz actually had a very central role in the racist anti-Chinese movement in this country, and it was, some of it was headquartered here, and prominent members of the community were its leaders. And so we have our own work to do on our own history, and this is part of that.
And if I could add also that the Asian American community was so important and instrumental in building the agricultural kind of foundations in the Pahara Valley and, and so, and agreed, I think, many of these, the counter of what you're doing when you are celebrating these communities is you are standing up against that hatred, and I so appreciate you asking these resolutions.
One of our former members, Dana Sales, is of Filipino descent, and he was very aware, and it was through him that we added the mention in here of the Filipino riots in 1930. It was a big part of Watsonville's history. So I'd like to include that again as an acknowledgement of that and also of Dana.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sandra. Motion by Bruce, seconded by Sandra. Could you take the roll call?
Yes.
Trustee Estrada.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez.
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen. President Roth.
Yes. The motion passes. Next is approval of Resolution 24-17, recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month.
Yes, thank you. So this, I think, is also one of those timely resolutions that where our awareness of the depth of, of the mental health crisis that exists in our community and among our youth and our families is, that awareness has really grown, and our call to action to be able to support our students and our families has, has never been more important. And recognizing, I think, the, the many traumatic experiences, the mental illness and the far-reaching effect it has on the lives of our, of our, of our community is, is important. Also to build up our capacity to be able, even as laypeople, to be able to support each other as peers, as colleagues, as community members, as community leaders, and also to ensure that the professional support is, is available for our community to be able to ensure that, that we, there, as we say, there is no wrong door when it comes to behavioral health and mental health services for our students and for our community. And we are working hard to champion those services in support of our community, and you'll be hearing more about that very soon, because there has been a significant investment from, from the state to allow us to expand those services. And so this, this resolution both makes, reminds us of the need for this work and also speaks out in the need for, for taking action to support and provide behavioral health services.
When I was reading this, when we got the agenda, it triggered a thought for me, which is that a relatively new development in the questions of mental health, aside from just more awareness and more people paying attention and devoting resources, especially with kids, is there's been a change in professional sports in the last few years, where suddenly major sports figures are saying, like Simone Biles, "I'm sorry, I'm taking a mental health break." That's, that is radical for the, the public acknowledgement of those kinds of questions. We've had football players, basketball players, Olympic stars, you know, and not just the top stars, but it's become okay to acknowledge your, your emotional and mental state, and even when you're having trouble, it's okay, which it should be. So to me, I just, I just, I was really struck by thinking about, in the sports world, where until a few years ago, it was all about being tough and impervious to pain and just getting through and being determined, and winning is the only priority. And that's a big change. So anyways, I thought I'd comment. It's not part of the resolution, but it's part of the picture. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Bruce with first, Sandra with second. Could you take a roll call, please?
Student trustee Alvarez Delgado.
Yes.
Trustee Estrada.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez.
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen. President Roth.
Yes. Next resolution is order, number 24-18, ordering an election. Our board coinciding. Dr. Spa.
Yes, so this is a requirement whenever, every time the term of a county board of education member ends, we have to, you have to pass a resolution to notify the county clerk that those, that, at the next election in November in this case, there would be, that these positions would be, would, there would be an election forum. And so this is under Education Code Section 5322. You'll notice that this November, we have, we will have four positions that are up for, are open for, for election, trustees area 3, 4, 5, and 6. You'll notice that the, there are names assigned to those. We will, I believe, maybe perhaps when you can make a motion, we could remove trustee Alto's name from there, because at this point, she is not a trustee. And so the resolution, which would say vacant, I believe, instead of, instead of with trustee Alto's name. And so we, this is one of two resolutions, one for Santa Cruz County, and then there's another resolution for Monterey County, because area 6, trustee Acosta's area actually crosses the county line. And so there's, we actually have to do a resolution for Monterey County as well.
That's the only area that overlaps, Santa Cruz County, COE.
Yes, that's correct.
Monterey. That's not going to Santa Cruz. So.
One, one thing real quick.
Yes.
It still has Rose, Rose's name for incumbent on page 103. And then it says, you know, year elected or appointed, so that would be.
Is that part of the paperwork, though? What Eduardo is talking, is what Eduardo is talking about, the actual name with the year of election and?
The table that's in the resolution would be part of the resolution. So then, is that the one you?
Yeah. The notice to the clerk that follows the map, I believe it is a requirement, I'm just following the county clerk's template.
Alyssa, I don't see Rose.
On page 103, right before the map.
And is that part of the resolution, too?
It's not.
Oh, okay, now I see it. Okay, it's further down on the.
Yes, it's not, or it is.
It is, actually.
We will.
Edward would like his name on that chart.
Of course.
Of course. Yeah, the one that we're looking at, which is, I think, how it's going to be presented, includes the current trustees, except that it has trustee Alto on there. And so this will be the table that we will utilize, so we will definitely change that table.
If you scroll down, there's another table that's.
Correct, and on your backup, that's, we'll, we'll be sure to correct that.
Well, I'll move approval of this resolution with the names of incumbents corrected.
I will second.
That was for Santa Cruz, that was for Santa Cruz County, and then we'll do a separate one for.
Student trustee Alvarez Delgado.
Yes.
Trustee Estrada.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez.
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen. President Roth.
Yes. And passes. We'll move on to the 124-19, ordering the election in Monterey County.
Yes, and this one, as I mentioned earlier, is just in relation to trustee area 6, which crosses over into Monterey County and the registered voters of the district residing in that trustee area. And so the, the remainder of the resolution are very similar, is under Education Code Section 5322.
So move.
Do we, do we, first, or second first, or can I do comments afterwards?
After the second.
Is there a second? Okay.
Do we have to include the areas that aren't in Monterey County?
I can confirm, double-check with the Monterey County. I did send them the whole packet, and they gave me the approval, the registered voters, so I'm not sure.
You, you're asking if we should include the other areas and state that they're not included?
Why include the other areas if they're not going to be on the ballot in Monterey County?
Oh, I see. So it's, the backup is different than, than this one?
Well, these are the first two pages of the resolution, and then afterwards, it has the checkmarks of the candidate statement of qualified and all that administrative part. And then at the end, it has just the table of all of the positions.
We'll verify it. If it's not necessary, then we will remove it.
Veronese, we have a motion by Bruce, seconded by Sandra.
Student trustee Alvarez Delgado.
Yes.
Trustee Estrada.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez.
Yes.
Trustee Van Allen. President Roth.
Yes. We have reached the superintendent's report, item number 13.
Yes, we have.
Just want to make sure.
So I will definitely be, be brief in my presentation, as I know this has been a long meeting. I just wanted to share with you some, some exciting news about new positions and folks that have joined our organization. Marcia Russell, who is currently working as our senior director of District Support Services, has been, has been approved, has been hired, has been hired, as our associate superintendent at services for, as of July 1. And so as you've heard before, Dr. Angela Meker is going to be retiring from her position after a absolutely amazing year and an amazing career in education. She has been absolutely wonderful and has done, just been a wonderful part of our cabinet team and an amazing leader in ed services. And we hope that after a few months of R and R, will be continuing to support us and with the many skills that she has. And we are very fortunate to have Marcia Russell, who's going to be joining us in that position and joining our cabinet team. I would love it if Marcia could come to the board at one point and for you to get to know her, because she is going to be sitting in that seat next year, and it'd be great for, for her to introduce herself to you and for you to get to know her a little bit. Also, Domingo Flores is, was hired as our director of technology in security infrastructure, excuse me, in compliance. This is a position we've been, we waited, we worked on to hire over a year, and this is something that is in great need, great demand for both out in, in education world and also in the business world, and one that we, we really need to safeguard, the system structures and, and resources that, that we utilize. The number of attacks that are occurring from, from a variety of different threats, as they call them, is continuing to increase significantly, and we need expertise to be able to, to prepare for them. Also, Ashley Selk, who's a coordinator, who's, we received a grant from the, called the Central Coast K-16 Collaborative, who's going to be helping us with articulating and creating healthcare career opportunities for, for our youth. Pablo Moran, who comes to us from PVSD, is our maintenance custodian, and Lois Preslowski, who is working as an instructional aide. We want to let you know that we are asking everybody, including our board members, to opt into a safety protocol, so that you receive notifications that go out. Right now, we kind of rely on our, our phone system, and we want to be able to communicate with you to let you know, let's say if there is a situation taking place here at the COE, not to come to the COE, we would send out a notification that would go out, or if there is a situation that occurs, that you'd be, you'd be aware of that. And so we're, hopefully, you've had an opportunity to, to complete the opt-in form. I think you've probably received it in your email, and if you haven't, we'll, please let Veronese know, and she'll be sure to, to send, send you another copy of that. In April, we're recognizing, and these are, these are, you've already approved these last board meeting, Child Abuse Prevention Month, we're going to be participating in a flag-raising event that, that Adam Spickler is working with many partners to, to have an event to bring awareness to child abuse and ways to prevent it. Of course, our business office services team also will be every Thursday, wearing blue and to, to bring awareness to our, here, to our community here at the COE, and so we continue to do that as well. Also, Arab American Heritage Month is celebrated in April, and also our multilingual learner advocacy month, and one of the reasons we have the presentation today. Moving on, I did want to share with you that Nicole Young is going to be reaching out to gather your input and thoughts about modifying our strategic plan. We are working on updating it, and so there will be, we're going to start with surveys, and then we will also be speaking with you here to get your feedback and input about any changes to our strategic plan that we'd like to do. This, our process is to, between now and September, is to update our plans, so we're reaching out to our community, our staff, to give us feedback and ideas of areas. One example, you'll notice that we talk about, in, we, we talk about equity as at the heart of what we do, and one of the, one of the values that has come is that, you know, we believe in diversity and equity and inclusion, and we also believe in belonging, that we're all about creating a sense of belonging. So like many organizations that have had belonging to their, to their strategic plans as something that has come out of this work. We have some exciting events that are taking place on Saturday, Green Classroom Celebration. That is, is that the challenge? Is that the? I'm not sure if that's a celebration. Okay, all right, good, because I was wondering why it's a challenge. Got it. So the Green Classroom Celebration is taking place on Saturday at 10:00 AM, and so we'll be sure to, for you to get that information. A lot of great work that I think that Santa Cruz COE is, is one of the leaders across the state to really support environmental justice and sustainability in our classrooms, and so many of our school districts are working to, to create those opportunities, and, and there's more resources that are, that are, are being made available to our students and our teachers. We're also participating and supporting the Central Coast Foster and Homeless Education Summit, which is happening tomorrow, and this is a tri-county event to really talk about the different services for foster, foster youth and homeless students experiencing homelessness. Tomorrow night, our students, our creative students are going to be participating in fashion teens, where they actually use recycled material, disused, you know, we don't, I don't want to use the word garbage, but, you know, resources that in a sustainable way, working to create beautiful, beautiful clothing with that, and, and in a, in a very inspiring way. And so. inspiring way. And so, you'll see some, some, some really inspiring creative ideas that the students have come up with, and how to use these materials that we would normally discard and end up in, in, you know, in the dump. And so, really, really, it's, it's a lot of fun, and it's, it's inspiring. Our Youth for Environmental Action Summit is taking place on Monday, and we'd love it if you could join us around 9:00 AM at Camp Quinonia. And, and then the World Language Showcase, Language, World Languages Showcase is taking place on April 24th, which is Wednesday of next week, at SoCal High School. Also, already talked about the Fourth Annual Rising of the Rainbow Flag on May 2nd. We're collaborating with our school districts and Santa Cruz Community Health, to show, for showing a fentanyl high, to bring awareness as a student-created movie about the fentanyl crisis. And it's, it's powerful. We've had a chance to take a look at it, and we would love it if you could join us there. We believe that the tickets are going to run out, so if you can, you can be there on, on May 2nd. We're also looking at a May 15 date in Watsonville. We're working on a youth art exhibit, the county building on May 3rd. We talked about the COE Staff Appreciation Picnic on May 8th, a Career and Resource Fair on May 9th, and, and the 27th Career Youth Leadership Awards on May 11th at Scotts Valley. And then, and you'll be receiving invitations to all the graduations that are taking place. It feels super early and happening so soon, May 21st, just around the corner. We're already looking at graduations, but, you know, as, as you know, one of the, one of the best times of the year for us to celebrate our students. And you'll see on the top right corner, some additional, we're participating in, in the Pride Parade on June 2nd, and also a blood drive. I wanted to share with you that, that Melissa Roberts and Marvel and Quiros have been leading an anti-bias, anti-racism training that is in huge demand, and, and it's about how, as a teacher, do you address bias, hate, words of, you were talking about bullying in the classroom. How do you address when words of hate, specifically in the area of racism, and how do, you know, and in many cases, teachers feel like they don't know what to do, and they, or they, they get angry, or they freeze, or, and this is really helping to, helping teachers and other staff to have the tools to be able to respond appropriately to, to that situation, and really create an environment of support and of trust and of, that makes sure that our students are safe. And I did want to share with you that you probably saw some notifications from the treasurer, Treasurer Ma, who talked about Cal Kids. Was that, I believe, I believe you did receive that. The Cal Kids is a program that was launched last year to create college savings accounts, where students who come from low-income families receive up to $500. And, and it's this, this is money that sits in a bank account that you can add to. And then when you go to college, you notify the university or the college that you're, you have the savings account, and the money is transferred to pay for your tuition, for your books, for your housing. And, and it can, this has been shown to have a huge effect on the likelihood when parents are aware that their child has a savings account. It has a huge effect on the likelihood of that child going to college, direct effect. Unfortunately, these accounts have been created, and there's another local effort called Semillitas from the Community Ventures, and there are thousands of students who have accounts, but parents are not aware of them, and they're not logging into the system. They're not creating accounts to find out that they have these accounts. Many of these students are now high school seniors, and they may have an account. And if they're not aware of it, they won't be able to notify the, the community college or the university that those accounts exist, and then, and that money will end up saved to the programs. And so, we're going to be, we're partnering with Community Ventures and other organizations, our school districts, to help parents sit down in front of a computer to create the account, even if they've never, you know, been on a computer before, to let them log in. And then once they have that account, they'll be able to see how many of these college savings accounts may have been created for them, and they're not even aware that they exist, to ensure that, that helps support students to, to continue their, 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 their college trajectory and move, and move forward with utilizing those resources to benefit their, their college experience. And so, so that measure of success is how many families log in, create an account and log in and actually see it. That's, and that's what we're measuring. We're probably at about 4%. We have a lot of work to do, and we're going to be working hard. And then, I did want to share with you, just as an update, that we, you know, in the timeframe, you've already passed the, the two resolutions related to the election, so we're going to have four positions that are going to be up for election this year in November. And once, now that you've approved these resolutions, we will be forwarding those to the county clerk. And just as a reminder, that, that you'll be, this term will continue through December 6, which at that point, you, if you're re-elected, or new members would be sworn in at that point. And that is it for my report.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah, any questions? We are going to revisit some of these things. Student trustee report, how have you been doing, Oscar?
I think just the YEA Summit happening on Monday, April 22nd, that Ferris mentioned already, that the Youth Mental Health Leadership Council is going to have a table, and it's going to be an activity where participants can come and plant wildflowers and herb seeds in their pot to promote the mental health benefits of connecting with nature. As well as on May 4, the Youth Mental Health Leadership Council is facilitating a workshop for the Cultivating Hope event in Watsonville. And yeah, that is it for me.
Thank you, Oscar.
Very, very good. Trustee reports, Eduardo?
I don't, I don't think I have anything to report over the last, I will not be able to get to the SCUSBA meeting on, is it Tuesday? Sue?
It's usually on Monday.
Monday, okay. I'm, I'm going to a work conference in Dallas. Anyone else would like to, to go?
And I will be out. I'm retiring tomorrow and leaving on Sunday for a few days. Yeah. So it would be greatly appreciated. And you said that you would kind of type up something?
Yeah.
And send it to the secretary.
Are those, are those virtual still?
No, no, any person. And they're here.
I doubt if I can get away.
They meet at 6:30.
Yeah, but regardless, I'll send in a report for us, so.
Then, let's see. Nothing? Okay.
You can speak into the?
Me too.
I've had a very stressful and full of chaos month, and I've hardly done anything for the county, for the county board of education. So I have nothing other than the hectic situation in my life. Perhaps next month will be better.
Thank you, Sandra. Abel?
Yes. First, I want to take back the last comment that I made for the resolution, the last resolution. I was getting the Santa Cruz and the Monterey one confused, but the Monterey County one, too, the registrar voters does only mention Area 6, which is Monterey. So, looks fine. Second question that I have, well, it's a question that you, I don't know if we have the answer to it, but we can follow up with it as well. I have in my calendar, Wednesday, May 8, there's an ethics training here. Is that still going on?
I wondered what that, I have it too.
No, I can remove that right now from the calendar. Didn't realize it was still on there. CSBA is rescheduling that to October. It will still be here at our office.
Oh, okay.
There's no, there's no May?
Mm-mm.
Perfect. Thank you for that.
Banish it from the?
We can stay, we can stay late to the staff appreciation. So my calendar was the 25th. We had the WASC lunch, and that was really good. I was able to, to attend and just see the different community members. And, and it's fascinating, the reach that the COE has, and how it impacts other people, other organizations, and likewise, how those organizations, you know, impact, partner, and help us out. That was just good. It was just a good environment, being everybody in the same room. Really enjoyed that. And also, this past Saturday, April 13, PCS had their annual bash, so I was able to attend that, to show support for them, as one of the, the charters that we are the LEA for. It was held at UCSC at the, at the barn? What's, what's it called, the barn? Is that?
The bottom of the?
Beautiful. I like that place. Really nice. And that is, yeah, and that's my report for the month.
Bruce?
Well, I had the total fun of being a judge at the Rotary Student Speech Contest, and the students were fabulous. And it was just really fun to see a nice cross-section of the community there. Probably had the longest, friendliest conversation that I, lefty radical Bruce Van Allen, had with about to retire county supervisor Bruce McPherson. We've generally pretty much been always on the opposite sides of almost any issue you can name. But I do appreciate his public service, and we totally bonded at the, at the student speakers event. So it was fun. But again, I just, I really appreciate our, our systems, our schools, and our teachers and staff for promoting students in the way that could get them to that point. So, it was fun.
The Rotaries have supported student speech for a long time, and they do a good job at it. And as far as me, I attended the WASC Alt Ed Luncheon that we had here, and all I can say is it just blows my mind, the scope of community that we reach, and the support of our community into these programs that we have. So, I hope the WASC went well.
It was, it was very positive. We haven't received the, the formal notification, but they, they, everything that they communicated to us was that it was an outstanding visit. So we're very hopeful that we'll get a full six-year.
Well, I was in awe of the kickoff, you know. Oh, really? Okay. So now, we need to look at replacing Alyssa Alto. And because of the date of her resignation, do you want to explain it?
Yeah, yeah, that would be, so, with, since Alyssa Alto has, has, is no longer trustee, you really have 60 days from the date of that resignation to either call for a special election, or to appoint somebody, as she was appointed to that position, to stay in that, to complete the term, which is goes till December 20. Oh, you're right, you're right. She was, she was elected, you're right. She was originally appointed and then elected. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. And so, her term will go until December 2024. And so, you have a choice to, to make a determination whether you want to move forward with an appointment or to call for a special election. The special elections are generally very costly, and we haven't gotten a calculation yet from, but they have been in the neighborhood of about $80,000, and that was a few years ago. And so my guess is it's, it's even more expensive. So you may be familiar with the process of, of an appointment, if you choose to go. Our trustee Estrada was just recently appointed to that, to, to this, to this board. And, and so, it really is, we're looking for direction from the board to, to, if you want us to move forward with the process, to help you find somebody to be appointed, or if you're going to be deciding if you want to move forward with, with a, a special election. Generally, the process for, for the appointment, as we recently implemented with trustee Estrada, is the formation of an ad hoc committee for appointment. That committee of board members would work with the staff to create the notification that goes out, the information, and then line out the process you want to utilize. If you recall, with trustee Estrada, we had interviews that took place here in an open session, and, and we would set the timeframe to ensure to meet that 60-day requirement and make a recommendation, board approval of that appointment.
The 60 days, is the new replacement board member has to be seated, or we have to make the appointment?
You make? Correct. That's correct. It's, it's when you make the motion to appoint a specific person at that point, that's, that resolution would be.
And that, and that deadline is June 14th. It's a Friday.
So just to add on to that, if we do decide to go through a special election, it doesn't have, that doesn't have to be before June 14th, right?
No, you'd have to make the decision, the resolution, to have a special election before June 14th.
How long does it usually take to, to go through a special election?
It's going to be really close. Generally, it takes about, I think it takes about three to four months, or?
It's going to be November.
So it'd be, it would be right before the November.
A week before than November.
So if you recall, there was legislation that recently passed that if you're six months away from the election, then you can just say, we're going to wait until the regular election. But we're a little bit more than the six months. I mean, by just six months from now is, is, is October, right? So we're like one month, it's a one-month difference.
I don't like, especially the idea of going several months with a vacancy, but an election is expensive, and if we appoint someone, let's say we do that in early June, we have a special meeting, or we do our May meeting, they're going to have to turn around and run. So we'd have to make that very clear to them, than to the public, that the appointment only lasts until December. I'm just, even though I don't like the idea of going a long time with a vacancy, I wonder if we could go to a judge and say, could we get another 18 days or whatever it is, to get that six-month extension, and then not have to call an election or rush an appointment that then forces that poor person to have to run again? I don't know. I mean, I guess if someone was going to, oh, maybe, let me pull that back. If someone was going to run, if Alyssa had stayed in and was going to run for reelection, or someone else wanted to run, the filing period opens in July. So actually, if we make an appointment in May or June, that person's going to have to go through the same thing anyway, no matter what. So maybe that doesn't, I mean, they're just, they're just going to have to go through it.
This, I mean, and, and my recommendation would be that, that if you're able to have a full board, you know, that's, that's in our best interest, I think, as a, as a county board, as a county office of education. And so, if there, if there's nobody out there than, you know, who's wanting, who's interested, willing to do it, of course, that's, that would be different. But if there are people who are interested in that, I think it would be in our best interest to, to fill the board as a complete board.
I think one of the benefits, despite being costly, of this special election is that the community gets to choose. But to reiterate what Bruce said, they're going to choose anyways, in a couple of months. So we're not necessarily taking that away from the community. We are, we're not taking that away from the community by appointing versus going through a special election.
And then trustee Sanchez, just to add, when we are advertising for the provisional appointment, we are required to post it in, in a newspaper on our website, and at three public locations in that trustee area. So we are supposed to make it known.
And how soon?
Or it has to act. That would be once you take action.
Soon as you tell us to go.
That should be right away, because the clock's already ticking.
I think working backwards from June 14th, we did anticipate that if, and part of what the, if you decide to move in that direction and create an ad hoc committee, if you decide to move in that direction and create an ad hoc committee or for the appointment, is that we would work backwards from June 14th. Probably, I, I do think it's realistic to think that we'll have to have a special board meeting, maybe at the end of May, beginning of June, for the, for that process.
We already got two meetings in May. You know, we have our board retreat.
Oh.
That's the next topic.
Okay. Well, I'm inclined to say, let's set up the process to do an appointment. That seems economical and get somebody there sooner, so. Is there a motion to make?
Yeah, I was going to say, and it's not part of the agenda, right?
It would be, be appointing a committee. And you headed up last.
I could help if you're looking for nominations.
I like the willingness, you know, especially at this time of the year.
And then we would make a recommendation and what, come back in May? That seems like a long time to wait for that. What, what's, what's the next step after the committee?
So the, the ad hoc committee, which the, the board president can, has, is, can appoint that committee and, and working together, we can put together. The official action really is the appointment. And so, so we would be able to move forward with, with the process of sending out the notifications and whatnot. We would probably bring some information back to you for, for the process and at our May meeting. But my guess is, what's realistic is that it would require a special meeting.
The committee will need to get together soon by something, maybe virtual.
Correct.
Well, I would make a motion that to fill a vacancy on the county board.
Actually, I'm, I'm sorry, since this is not on the agenda, you're not able to make a motion. However, our bylaws do allow for the, the, the president to create an ad hoc committee.
Like to ask Bruce and Abel to, to do this. Thank you. And we will be looking forward, probably the May meeting, if not sooner.
You know, the reason I actually was in my mind in this certain motion was, did you need direction to take steps like reach out to the county?
So we already have a protocol that actually, for this process, that was, that is part of our, of, for this, this process. And so, which we've, we followed when we, we appointed trustee Estrada. And so by the formation of the committee, you'll, we'll be able to work together. Again, none of the process, none, none of the things we're going to be doing are formal in any way. So it's not like we're doing something outside of the guidelines of the board. Because it really is the, 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 the appointment that is actually a formal action.
Yes, if, yeah, if we were going to an election special, then we would have to take steps with the county clerk.
You would, you'd need a resolution that would have, would have to be agendized. And there will be a resolution for the appointment, which will be.
Thank you both. Maybe it will be very successful. Then the next thing, I talked with Lou Ann Rivera. And she suggested that it would, it would be okay with her and you all, that we could postpone the May board meeting, special board meeting. And we could refer to it in May. Or perhaps it would be best use of our money and time is for it to be in January, February, following the election. Because quite possibly, we may have four in four. I mean, I have been through the beginning when you're dealing with a lot of new board members. It really helps to have that kind of decision. Way forward. But I would like for us all to hear this. And if any of your, and Paris or the, yay or nay on, it wouldn't be a final option. I think it's not on the agenda.
To me, that makes a lot of sense, that we'll have a bunch of new people who will, will want to do something like that anyway. It's a bunch of people.
Does she have availability? Because I would assume.
I did, I did talk to her this morning, or the staff.
I know her schedule can be pretty busy.
She has availability in August. And of course, she has availability of January, February. But she wants to know as soon as possible so we can get her. Consensus? August?
I think, January, yeah, I think next year would be fine. I'm totally fine with either way.
Since the, so an item 17, the schedule of meetings is actually on your board packet. And so you are, and the special board meeting is there. And so you are able to make changes since it is, it does to remove that special board meeting.
So should we take a vote then?
You could do that and that would formally.
I'd like to move that.
I'll second.
Thank you. Oscar, your vote?
Aye.
Avoid all those anchors.
Have you got something?
Because it's on our agenda, showing a meeting in May. We can do this and it would be a very.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'm sorry. Confused you. So I believe we are, have covered everything. And it's been a long meeting. I appreciate everyone's attention and help in going through today. And I adjourn the meeting and.